Good evening. The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Boards of Education is now brought to order on Monday, December 5th, 2016 at 7 o'clock. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone. Your attendance this evening reflects your interest in public education and is greatly appreciated. So at this time, we have two students from Graham Elementary School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. So with Adriana and Landon, please come to the front.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Audrey and Landon, if you would just stand right here. We're going to read your biographies and see what your teachers have said about you, okay? Landon first, your teacher is Mrs. Taylor. Landon is a wonderful first grade student. He is an excellent reader and writer and claims that his favorite part of the day is calendar notebook because he knows that lunch is soon to follow. Landon is a class representative for student council and is a fantastic leader and role model in the classroom. Outside of school, he enjoys playing his iPad, jumping on his trampoline, and he also is an avid soccer player. Landon is an amazing and all-around great kid. And now for Adriana. Your teacher is Mrs. Beatty.
Beatty.
Beatty? Thank you. Audrey is a sweet, kind, mindful of others. She's helpful around the class as well as to her peers. She is a good friend to everyone in the class. She is an excellent student. In class, she is always on her best behavior. You can always find her participating, paying attention, and following directions. Audrey is also very smart. This semester, she got all As on her report card. She is outstanding in all subjects but has a real gift for writing.
Very good.
Do you have anyone special in the audience today? If you'd like to point them out? Your parents?
Literally pointing to them.
And your teacher? Is your teacher or your principal here today? May I please stand?
Thank you.
On behalf of the Wayne Westland Board of Education, we would like to thank you for the Pledge of Allegiance. And on behalf of the Board, we do have an award for you, Landon Lawrence. So here is your award. And you as well as Adriana Lawrence. We'd like to thank you on behalf of the Wayne Westland Board of Education for saying the Pledge of Allegiance. And here's your award as well. So please stand, and Jenny's gonna come and take your picture.
So you're all set, and Ms. Johnson is gonna take your picture out in the hallway. And you guys are more than welcome to stay, but I understand if you have to leave too, you don't have to sit through the whole meeting. Thank you for coming. Moving on to item number 197.17, roll call of attendance, please. Dr. Weaver.
Mr. Griffin.
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo is excused. Mrs. Hines.
Present.
Mrs. Madison is excused. Mrs. Madell.
I'm here.
Mrs. Walker.
Present.
Not present as well.
Thank you. At this time, I need to, I'm asking that we have a motion to agenda, agenda and add item number 203.17.1 to report on the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
Support is moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Ms. Hines. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes. Let the record reflect that we have a, what is it, five to zero vote. Thank you. Moving on to item number 197.17, presentations and recognitions. Dr. Harmala.
Yes, I'm gonna hand it over to Assistant Superintendent John Albrecht, and he has staff here from Tinkham, and they're gonna provide us an update on the changes.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Harmala, those here in attendance and those watching at home. As you recall, we've been evaluating programs across the district and making recommendations as a result of those evaluations. So with us here tonight from Tinkham Educational Center Alternative High School are Director Kim Dolman, Supervisor Deborah Carr, Teachers Diane Forney from Social Studies, Dana Dalzow from Math, Ken Vanderwerp Science, Belinda Wallaconis C-Mech from Language Arts. Two years ago, we sought support to restructure our alternative high school program. The idea for that initiative actually originated with Rebecca Peck. A team was formed and a recommendation was made to the Board of Education to go forward with that plan, and the goals would be to serve very specific student population who had struggled in a normal big school setting for whatever reason. We wanted to improve success rates as measured by certain achievement metrics and help the district's overall graduation rates. We chose certain specific measurements to consider. Student enrollment, student success rates as measured by earning credits in classes, student attendance, and behavioral data. We promised a report on that progress at certain intervals, so we are here tonight to do just that. Let me begin by recognizing this group of people that are up here tonight. Not all of them could be here. Without their support and the program's leadership, we wouldn't have been able to make the progress we have made. These people are outstanding at what they do, they're committed, and should be commended for it. So first of all, our enrollment prior to the change was typically sixty to sixty-five pupils. In the fall of 2015, it was a hundred and twenty-six, and a year later today, that number is now at a hundred and eighty and approaching capacity. Second, student success rates were typically very low in the past. In the fall of 2015, students were successful in earning credits at fifty-seven percent of the classes taken. This fall, that rate has grown to sixty-seven point six percent. Third, discipline rates prior to the restructure ran almost one suspension per student each marking period. Last year at this time, that was half of that. This year, it is now point three seven or twenty-six percent better than it was even last year. Finally, attendance has been a challenge. It has not improved dramatically since last year, and data clearly indicates that this factors into students' lack of success, and we are looking to find remedies going forward. Finally, again, I want to specifically point to the efforts and commitment on a part of the staff at Tinkham. Students have benefited from this restructure, and these are the people who should receive that recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No one's gonna speak.
No.
I would like to say I'd like to thank you folks for the job you do every day, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, definitely. We definitely appreciate all your hard work and time that you've put into making that program great, and we really appreciate you taking your time out to be here this evening as well.
I was gonna say, we weren't clapping because you weren't gonna say something. We're applauding the great job that you have done. I recently ran into one of your colleagues down at Wayne State, and she expressed how thrilled she was to be in the new facility, that it had vast improvement over her previous conditions, and that it made a big impact on the students also as to their willingness for a new beginning, not only just for the program but also for themselves. So, you know, in hindsight, you know, it was a good choice. When we had to make it, it was a tough choice. But I think with your help and with every other support that we've given you, I think it's gonna be a big success. So keep up the good work.
Thank you again.
We appreciate your support. Thank you.
I'm just, I'm not gonna reiterate whatever the Board member said. I just appreciate your efforts. It was a tough choice for the Board, and I think the Board made the right choice with the help of you people to do this, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
And I also would like to thank you guys for your support and your dedication to our children, and this is a very positive move, and I'm excited of what's gonna happen to the future years because of your efforts for this program.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to 197.17, item B. And so, Mr. Griffin, if you can go down to the center there. On behalf of the Board of Education, your colleagues, your friends, we just wanna thank you for your many years of service. You've brought some great perspectives to the Board. We really value a lot of the things, your input that you put in, and it was just a pleasure to serve with you all these years. It was kinda hard news when you decided that you weren't gonna run, because we were all, we were all becoming together as a family and meshing together. But I understand retirement calls, Florida calls, and it gets cold here in the winter, so I understand.
All of you, well.
But we just wanna give you this small token of our appreciation just to say thank you, that we appreciate you, and this is a board of recognition certificate for you. On behalf of the whole Board of Education, we're presenting it to you today, as well as a small token, and Jen can get you a bite to eat on us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. On behalf of all the Board, I may have something to say later on in the agenda, but I just wanna thank you now.
All right. Well, we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
This is a place on our agenda where anyone in our ranks tonight can speak to any agenda item. I see no takers.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Moving on to item number 199.17, consent agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a five-zero vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 200.17, review and approval of business services and finance items. Mr. Larson Schiler.
Thank you, President Walker. This is a bus purchase, and how this came about is due to district finances. District started leasing buses in the thirteen-fourteen school year to maintain our bus fleet. We are now leasing twenty-nine of our eighty-seven buses with annual payments totaling about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per year from our general fund. These leases consist of two- and three-year leases. The companies that lease the buses to the district provides the district the option of first refusal to purchase buses when the lease expires. Purchase price to the district is reduced for the lease payments, less interest costs. I contacted companies we lease from to discuss purchase terms for the twenty-nine bus leases. We currently have four leases of 2015 regular education buses expiring June 30th of 2017. I am recommending purchase of these buses totaling two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand four-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars. The original cost of four buses was three-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand six-sixty. We have the option to purchase three additional buses prior to the expiration of the lease. The leases on these buses are a three-year term, which we have paid one annual payment so far. The buses are for special education and include one 2016 bus with a lift and air conditioning. Incidentally, that lease payment is due December 8th if we don't purchase it, and two thirty-passenger 2017 special education buses. Purchasing the buses early will save the district's general fund fourteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars in interest costs over the last two years of the lease. Total purchase costs, total cost of the purchase of these three buses is one-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-six-ninety-five, and the original cost was one-ninety-seven-five-ninety-four. Purchasing the buses as they come off lease will begin a phased-in replacement plan. Ideally, we would purchase eight to ten buses per year to develop a purchasing cycle that will help prevent all the district's eighty-seven buses from having to be replaced near the same time in the future. Bus leases and/or purchases will be more manageable and planned in future budgets. The purchase of seven buses totaling four-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-one-forty-three I'm recommending tonight is possible due to the recent passage of the enhancement millage. We will study future bus purchase to determine if there's an alternative funding method such as a bond issue.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver.
Second.
Supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion?
Yes, I would.
Mr. Griffin.
You know, one of the things that we promised the people in this community is that we would see if we could do something about the busing issue or the capital outlay expenditures, and obviously, we haven't had a chance to go out for a bond issue, so I think this just delivers on the Board's promise that we'll do this slowly but methodically with the fund that we have available from the county. And I think for the benefit of our students, safety is the number-one issue for this Board, so I highly support this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a five-zero vote.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item B, please.
Okay, thank you again, Madam President. Next item is purchase of 2010 Dell Chromebook laptop computers, thirty-six Chrome-based desktops, and the licenses for those one-hundred-and-forty-six computers, and six mobile cards. These purchases are through the Michigan statewide purchasing online bid. The computers will be deployed to Marshall, Franklin, and Adams. Purchases are budgeted in the Title I building allocations.
Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a five-zero vote.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 201.7, Board Officer Transition Process. Dr. Weaver.
In December, prior to January organizational meeting, the Board Secretary shall poll trustees and newly elected trustees for interest in officer positions. This polling will be done in an open session. All right. Mrs. Hines.
I would like to be the secretary.
I'm sorry?
Secretary.
Secretary. Mrs. Madell.
I will do anything that my fellow Board members would see fit to elect me to, and I would like to throw an exception, though. I do not want to be President, and I do not want to do Secretary again.
All right, so you are running for Vice President or Treasurer.
Or trustee. Whatever.
Well, Mrs. Walker.
I'm good wherever you guys put me, but I'll take all but Secretary, please.
Mr. Cox.
Through the chair to Dr. Weaver. Dr. Weaver, I seek no office, but if it's the Board's decision that they'd like me to serve in any particular capacity, I'd be available for that.
I think that part of the process is you have to name the position that you would like to be considered for.
What you said was appropriate. Yeah, it's fine. It'll be okay.
Yeah.
I will make myself available for all four positions.
And did we, did any word from Mrs. Madison or anything?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Buckaloo wishes to be considered for the Treasurer position.
That is correct. Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Is everyone pleased with what they have, we've done here? They're fine? Okay.
So just to be clear, then I should mark all four positions for Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Yes.
He's available.
Okay, moving on to item number 202.17, the Head Start Monthly Report. Mrs. Madell.
Actually, unfortunately, the November monthly report for Head Start has not yet been finalized, so therefore, you will receive that report in your January packet information.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 203.17, Board of Education Committee Reports. Ms. Hines.
Hello, I am doing a report on the Policy Committee. We had a meeting November 28th, 2016. Present was Dr. Michelle Harmala, Superintendent, Melody Hines, trustee, Carol Madell, trustee, Kevin Sutton, attorney. The meeting started at 6:10 PM. The committee reviewed and drafted a version of the Board operating procedures, the BOP developed by Lusk Albertson. The committee provided feedback to areas of particular concern identified by trustees throughout the policy development revision process. The draft of the BOP was recognized to condense and compile similar topics into singular sections for ease and reading and use. The draft includes reference to a Code of Ethics, which included in the updated version of the Lusk Albertson Policy Manual to be provided to the district upon release. The draft BOP will be provided to all trustees. Trustees are asked to review the draft and provide feedback in written form prior to January 9th, 2017. The Policy Committee will meet on January the 10th, 2017, at 6 o'clock PM to consider the feedback and formulate a draft for the full Board's consideration. The meeting was adjourned at approximately 7:45 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Moving on to item number 203.17.1, Report of the Superintendent's Evaluation. The Board of Education is required by law to evaluate the superintendent on a yearly basis. The superintendent's evaluation for the 2015-2016 school year includes the following components: professional practice, student growth, and progress towards district's wide goals. Dr. Harmala received a total score of ninety-four percent rating, rating her as highly effective. This score is comprised of two-point-six points for professional practice, point-seven-five points for student growth, and point-four-zero points for progress towards district-wide goals, for a total of three-point-seven-five out of four points. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve, for the Board to approve the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Griffin, supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a five-zero vote.
Thank you. Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Harmala.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 204.17, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Harmala.
Yes, good evening, and thank you, President Walker. First, I would like to thank the voters of Wayne County and the Wayne Westland community specifically for their support of the Wayne County Enhancement Millage during the November election. It seems like a while ago, but we have not had a Board meeting since that election. We appreciate the support and will be good stewards of the additional three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars per pupil we will receive over the next six years. We believe every student has the ability to learn and grow, and we must attract and retain talented personnel in all positions to challenge, enhance, and care for each individual student's educational experience and success. We must also ensure our instructional programs and services promote each student's growth and success, and that our support services, including transportation, provide a safe, comfortable, and timely start and end to each school day. As shared throughout the past six months, we intend to use the additional revenue we will receive to implement these important strategies and deliver on our promises for the sake of our students, and I can't thank all of the voters enough for their support. I'd like to also provide an update on legislation that's being considered currently during the lame duck session. First, MIPSers reform, which is Senate Bill 102, passed out of committee and is being addressed by the full Senate. As of this moment, the bill that moves all new educators into a 401K-type retirement system is being debated. The information that I reviewed and provided to you, the Board, from the Michigan Department of Technology, Management, and Budget reveals there will be additional costs to change from the current system to this new proposed system. Additionally, the changes made to MIPSers in 2012 that moved new employees into the hybrid defined contribution plan is reported as fully funded. In other words, the changes made are having the right impact. I have voiced my concern for this legislation and have also expressed concern about what it may do to exacerbate the difficulties we are having with staff attraction and retention. The legislature is also looking at Senate Bill 567, which would allow a pre-Labor Day school start as long as school is closed on the Friday prior to Labor Day, allowing for a four-day weekend. The flexibility provided in this bill, given the need to add school days, would greatly be appreciated. We have shared our support for this bill with our legislators. Also, a bill that would adjust the way income taxes allocated to the school aid fund is under consideration. This is being framed as a technical fix. However, analysis shows that the school aid fund would stand to lose approximately four-hundred-and-thirty million dollars if the income tax calculation moves from twenty-three-point-eight percent of gross income tax to the proposed twenty-three-point-eight percent of net income tax revenue. Obviously, Wayne Westland is expressing opposition to this particular change. We're continuing to watch the electric choice bills. Next, trustees, I'd like to thank all of you for your expression of satisfaction with my work for our district. I appreciate our collective relationship, our work together, and I believe these are the foundation on which we are, and we will continue to be successful. And I appreciate all the trust and support you've given to me and provided to our staff as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I've got two more things, real quick. As we move into the holiday season, I'd like to wish everyone the joy and peace of the season, be safe, and enjoy your break from school, and we'll see you in 2017. And finally, I'd like to thank Trustee Griffin for his support and service to Wayne Westland Community Schools. You've served the schools and the broader community in many ways and for many years. You've put the interests of others ahead of yourself, and you have provided wonderful support to me in service to this district, our district. I appreciate you, and I'm thankful for all you've done. I wish you the best as you enjoy more free time with your friends and your family.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, President Walker.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two zero five point one seven, Citizen Comments, Non-Agenda Items. Dr. Weaver.
This is a place on our agenda where you may come to the podium and express any, anything that's on your mind. Mr. Cox.
Through the chair, thank you, Dr. Weaver. Good evening, President Walker, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Harmala, administrative staff, educators, students, and citizens. Tonight, the last meeting of this Board of Education, I wish to express my gratitude for the exceptional work you have accomplished together. I know the many challenges you have faced have not been easy ones, and I commend each of you for the professionalism you have shown each other and the respect your conduct has brought our school district. I wish to congratulate you specifically for selecting an exceptional administrator to lead our district and implement your directives and maintaining the district's fiscal integrity in spite of the very difficult challenges against it, and for always putting the kids first. Madam President, I know we all share a love of public education and all that it makes possible, and to that end, I would like to share a short story. There was a small boy who grew up on a farm in Arkansas. His parents were of meager means. The house where they lived had no electricity, no internal plumbing, and this boy never even had a bed of his own to sleep in. His family did the best they could with very little, but earning a living was tough. There were many days when his dinner consisted of a squirrel he brought out of a tree with a slingshot or a catfish he noodled out of the Mississippi River. There were other days when the squirrel and catfish won the day, and there was no dinner at all. His summers were spent traveling from farm to farm picking cotton. This boy's mother wanted a better life for her son, but dad was sick, and the family had no money for the basics, let alone education. She was undaunted. She applied and applied and eventually discovered that the good people of the United States had funded a program that would allow kids like her son to attend college. At the age of eighteen, this kid went to Eastern Michigan University, where he enrolled in the ROTC program. He excelled and received a world-class education and was headed into a career with the United States Army Intelligence. Unfortunately, an inner ear problem ended his military career all too soon. But his education didn't end, and it allowed him the option in life that comes with education and preparation. With support from his young wife, he resolved to embark on a new course and became an educator. He taught in the classroom, coached basketball, football, and baseball. His coworkers recognized his keen intellect and gift for creating consensus and asked him to represent them in contract negotiations. This role expanded throughout his teaching career until one day he left the classroom to become Uniserv Director for the Michigan Education Association. But his story doesn't end there. The citizens of his community also recognized his abilities and selected him to serve them on their city council, where he eventually became president. He was later elected to serve as mayor of the city and amassed a set of accomplishments that if I were to list them, would be far beyond my time to talk tonight. Tonight, a successful career as a public official comes to an end with the political retirement of Charles Trav Griffin. Through the chair to Treasurer Charles Trav Griffin. Thank you, sir. For all you've given to our city and our school district, you are a remarkably gifted individual, and we know that the likes of you will not often pass our way. Best of luck in your retirement. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. That is very nice. Do we have anyone else in the audience who wants to speak? Moving on to item number two zero six point one seven, Review and Recommendations, Board of Education. Ms. Hines.
I'm trying not to choke up.
I know.
But I'd like to say I'd like to thank you for all you've done. You've been a really great role model to me, especially when it comes to the budget. So, I appreciate all the good advice you've given me, even, you know, talking me into joining the Board of Education. I definitely appreciate your support. So, you have done fabulous things for this community, and I really enjoy working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, Trav, it goes without saying, I appreciate every, every time you mentioned that we don't need an emergency manager here in Westland. And all those times when, when you expressed what was, what the truth was, and I appreciate that so very much. And also, would like to welcome Mr. Cox to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Madell.
I also would like to welcome Mr. Cox this evening and also to the school board, and next month, you will get a chance to be in the spotlight and at your swearing-in. We all went through the superintendent evaluation not too long ago. It was a great process, new instruments. Some things have not changed, like student achievement, which I personally feel is a little unfair, the percentages that we need to use. But we have a great superintendent. We have a great administrative team that you've put together. Some of them were handed to you, and some of them have come on board since that time, but everybody is working well together as a team for our students and our district. As the email said that I sent to you the very first year I was on school board, you've made my job easier. Thank you. This month is filled with all kinds of great activities going on in every single one of our buildings. So, make sure that you get a chance to see a choir concert or a musical concert that the students, all the way from our kindergarten students in some buildings, all the way through to our high school. This is that time of year to, to celebrate the achievements that our students have made in the music genre. I also got a chance this weekend to go down to Cass Tech High School and spend some time with our Wayne Memorial JROTC cadets. They were part of the competition down there this weekend, and they did really well. They did not come in first place. That was, the competition was extremely tough from two other competing schools, but our students did a really great job and did come in first in a couple of different activities. So, it was, it was nice to spend the day with them. Like I said, don't forget about the upcoming music concerts, and I guess this is the time for me to join in on the Trav Griffin farewell concert tour. Trav, when you first came on board, I wasn't quite sure about you. You know, I'd heard a lot of things. I don't believe everything I hear. I always take people as they come at my face, and I was willing to give you the benefit of the doubt, knowing that, you know, this wasn't your first time around the block, and things have changed over the years, but you rose to the occasion, and I can be a tough critic sometimes, but you, you outdid yourself, and I managed to learn a lot from you. I wasn't sure that that was going to happen, but you taught me a lot. You taught me a lot about process. You taught me a lot about governance, and for that, I am grateful, for that. And by the way, Trav, the word is wrestling, not rassling.
That's my brother.
I have, I have learned more about wrestling from you and Tom Buckaloo than I ever wanted to know. Thank you. I don't know when I'll ever use it, but, okay. So, I'm going to miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the spotlight's on you.
I don't know if I'll get through this, so I'm gonna, because I'm...
Just take your time.
Wow. I had a whole bunch of things here to say that I hope I can say get through some of this, because I think it's important, but...
It's your best shot at taking, taking a shot at us.
When I, when I first came on this board, you know, the board was, no question, I'm speaking off the cuff a little bit here, too, was split, and I said, you know, I'm going to work with everybody. That's just who I am. And what I see today is a board that's really together, and I think we've done some really good things. You know, I'm not going to repeat everything that Dr. Harmala said, but, you know, we just gave our superintendent a five-year contract. She deserved it, and what that does for this district, it gives us stability. And when you have stability, and we've only had one instance in this school district when that didn't happen, and Mr. Cox came in after that, so he has a little idea about that, but we have a five-year strategic plan, which includes our curriculum, which is Dr. Harmala's expertise among many, but her, and I think that's going to be a future that's going to help us tremendously. It's going to enhance our learning. We just, this community, you know, the county passed a six-year millage, and I told Dave I used to thank me, because I didn't know things were going to be this well when he came on in January, so I certainly didn't know that the county millage was going to pass, but our citizens' pass is overwhelming in this city. So, we're going to do the things that this board and this superintendent said. We're going to attract and try to attract the best talent we can get and retain those, and this money will allow us to do just that. I'm not saying it's the, it's the windmill that's going to help us completely get over the top, but it's going to help us not be at the bottom, and hopefully, we can get back to the middle of the county. I want to thank this community, and I want to thank this community and the board. For allowing me to serve, two terms, forty years. I was here in nineteen seventy-two, when we selected Dr. Tim Dyer, who the complex is named after, and of course, in two thousand sixteen, we, prior to this, selected Dr. Harmala. And two great people that I think have brought two things to this district. One is that Dr. Dyer was able to obtain the funds from Bill Ford, our head of the House of Representatives, and built, built this community, this project that we're sitting in here tonight. And Dr. Harmala, your ability to work with people is, is amazing. I just, I love the way you work with the community. So, I leave this board with a great, a great feeling of success, and I do that because the experience on this board. We have four presidents on this board. Tom is absent now because of illness, but then in January, we're going to have five. Dave Cox is coming on in January, and he used to be a president. So, Dave, I congratulate you on your election and your service to the community. I, the experience in this community that this board brings will lead stability and good decision-making for our schools, I think. I've loved working with all the board members and the staff. I think those, the service that they will give to our citizens, parents, and students will move us forward to the future. What I've learned over forty years of public service is that people only move into their community when they have good schools. They only stay in a community if they have good schools, and I think we're, we have both because of the actions this board has taken and, and the, the money that we're going to be able to hopefully attract and retain good staff. So, I think when we have good schools, we're in good hands with the administration, with stability, and this board has plenty of experience on it, years and years. So, I have a, I leave this board with great faith and a great feeling about the future of our school district, and I thank you for all your accolades. Good luck, and God bless you.
Thanks, Trav.
Thank you. At this time, I want to again thank the students from Petey Graham Elementary School, Audriana, and Landon Lawrence. I want to thank the Tinkham faculty for coming over and sharing what's going on over there. We really appreciate that program, and we appreciate them. I want to say to you, Dr. Harmala, you were not given those scores. You deserve those scores. And we are looking forward to moving forward with you and to keep up the good work. I also wanted to say to you, Mr. Griffin, again, just thank you. You brought something special to this board, and we'll always remember what you have given not only to this board, but to this community, and we will continue to make you proud.
Thank you.
You don't have to worry about that. And I think that Mr. Cox coming on, we're going to keep that strong relationship that we all have, agree and to disagree if we need to, but keeping the kids first. And with that being said, I just want to say, thank you all for taking time out of your busy schedules to come in and sit with us and go through our meeting. I want you to all have a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and please be safe out there. People, please be mindful of our children while they're out, off on their vacation, and just be careful and watch out for them, and we will see you all here again next year, two thousand seventeen. I can't believe that that's, we're saying that at this point. It just seems like we went into two thousand sixteen, and two thousand seventeen's going to be even greater and better. And at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Madell. Supported by Mrs. Hines. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, all opposed? Motion carries. Have a good night, everyone.